Interior Republican. We're just saying, one nation, one ground, individual for liberty and justice for all.
The mics are not on.
I'm trying to turn it off, okay. Thank you. Ms. Bonnet, you have a role, Mr. Terry.
Here.
Ms. Udaley.
Here.
Ms. Ferguson, Mayor.
Mr. Reed.
Here.
Mr. Rocker.
Here.
Ms. Simpson.
Here.
Is there a motion to approve the council meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Terry.
Yes.
Ms. Udaley.
Yes.
Ms. Ferguson.
Yes.
Mr. Reed.
Yes.
Mr. Rocker.
Yes.
Ms. Simpson.
Yes.
And is there a motion approving the council meetings from April 11th with the corrections of the work session by date?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Terry.
Yes.
Ms. Udaley.
Yes.
Ms. Ferguson.
Yes.
Mr. Reed.
Yes.
Mr. Rocker.
I'm staying.
Mr. Sence.
Yes.
I'm going to skip over the Booster Bash winner for mayor for a day at this moment and move into our visitor section. If you'd like to take this moment to address. Mr. Ford, did you have anything to, that you want to bring before council?
No, I just, I just wanted to add, why nobody from the city told us about all the digging going on? Nobody in my neighborhood could even get out that first morning. They had all the streets blocked. And then they came down, they dug up probably 10 to 15 feet in two places in my yard. And I, they didn't even come up and ask me about anything. They drove their, whatever that track hoe thing, driving it through the yard. Now, they did come down today and I don't know what, I see straw foot out, so they must've done something, but. But yeah, I just wondered why nobody was ever notified. Because I was getting, I had to take, get up at six in the morning and take my car uptown because I couldn't get out of the street if I didn't. And then walk back down.
And where do you live?
Down off Washington Avenue. It's a, down by below the Presbyterian Church.
What I'm finding from talking with staff members and because our public works supervisor has been out in contact with the companies. We have a couple of different, we have friends here coming through and then some other frontline frontier contact. They said that other entities have pulled right-of-way permits. So we are definitely taking down addresses and making sure that.
Yeah, I had no beef with them. I just wanted, because when I got up that morning, I couldn't go nowhere. I couldn't get out and nobody could either that lived on that Washington Street. I just wondered why nobody was ever told they were even coming down through there.
That's a good, yeah.
If, if, we're all residents of the village as well, so like we all, you know, we understand this, right? And if the comment or the overarching comment is, we could do better with communication, we 100% agree. We're working on it. We've created a committee to like start to address these issues. Mr. Sence is our chairperson. We will literally put this up. I have neighbors that ask me the same questions, right? I live on a street that has those little flags everywhere. So I totally understand it and we are addressing it. It's not fun at all to find out things late and we're, we are trying to do better, but it's a, it's a minute fault, right? Is what I would say.
I just would wonder why, you know.
Did you get any advance notice that this was going to happen on the street?
That's what he's saying, that's what he's saying. No, that's what he's saying, he did.
There was no notice.
No, no, right. No, no, I meant, like usually we, we send this out a few days ahead of time.
We're not doing it.
We're not doing it.
No, we're not doing it, but the administrative department, the village does, sends out notices when it's going to disrupt.
Mr. Reed, the administration is not doing it either. It's a third party and what we need to do is coordinate better with the third parties to make sure that they inform the residents of the village. So.
Sometimes the village does do it. They send out notices.
Did they at least do the work down your street?
Pardon?
Did they do the work down your street?
Yeah. Yeah, as far as I know, they're done there now.
We still got four holes in my street, no work done.
I will say this, Ford, they did come up and ask me about where my gas line come in. Because if they were to just start digging where they were going to, they would've went through the gas line. Because whoever want the gas lines out did not mark down the one street.
And I wonder if it's not front.
PUCO should have already had been out to mark all of that.
Yeah.
Our neighbors marked.
Yeah, somebody probably needs to follow up with.
Yeah, they did go down.
They're going to have to remark it on my street.
They did go down the Bigelow Street, but Washington Avenue, they did not, didn't do. So luckily, we caught them before they started there.
Understood. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
That's all, follow up, thank you, thank you.
I believe your mayor is here.
Oh, okay, he's on the, great, thank you.
We're getting feedback from the sound system, I think it's looping somehow.
Oh, I, I.
Okay.
I'm going to use this opportunity in a moment. Austin, you would come up, come forward real quick. Austin Rockwell signed up to be the Booster Bash award recipient for the mayor for a day. And so he was able to do some job shadowing this morning. We took a tour of the police department and public, our sewer plant and water plant and, and through the park. And so just wanted to present him the certificate and his nameplate. And thank you so much for being here and bidding on the mayor for a day. And so if you want to have a seat. Oh, yeah, you can.
Wrap the gavel once.
Would you like to?
Yeah.
Yes.
Give him one of these chairs as a sit up.
You can do a, tell the gavel if you'd like. Get you a chair.
We got one right here.
Got one right here.
Oh, yeah, we got one right here, okay. So you can.
You thought touring the police department was fun. Wait for this, man.
And you'll put your nameplate up there too. All right. Okay, I was just getting ready to go through my report. This coming weekend, we have our community yard sale. We have around 50 or so residents signed up to participate in that. And that's been just working through Safety Town and then all fielding questions from residents on their utility question. So that's been kind of last week for me. Ms. Bonnet?
Well, does Mr. Mayor have anything to report?
Oh, yeah, so you have any, how was your experience?
Do you have anything? How was, how was your day?
He's the asylum mayor.
You went to meet the mayor after job shadowing today?
Yeah, you have a report on how the day was?
Good.
Good? Perfect.
What was your favorite part of the tour?
I don't know.
This right here?
Oh, okay.
For sure.
When going into the car. Oh, into the least part. So keep, I want to thank Chief McKee for chauffeuring us around today. He got to ride in his car and he, and he drove us around to the different places. And so, and your tour of the police department, that was fun too.
Yeah.
I don't have a mayor reel, so. We have to rely on our PD for the excitement.
Awesome.
Yep, thank you. Ms. Bonnet?
I have nothing, I have nothing.
In chief, McKee is unable to be here this evening. Village administrator, we didn't have anything, she never chaired before. Ms. Lawdennis, I'm a station this week, council president.
Yeah, so we'll have our work session on May 4th. It is all about the zoning code rewrite. I recommend, if anyone's interested, to watch as much. Planning and zoning had like very in-depth meeting, this last meeting, and they had a work session about a month ago that I attended. It's probably, well, it's not, you know, most engaging thing to watch at home, but if you guys could take the time to try to at least watch some of the bigger parts so that we can skip rehashing some of the things that were talked about. And hopefully we can get the recommendation from planning and zoning and what they think sent to us in the Dropbox maybe a few days ahead. So we have time to review that, that'd be great.
Thank you, Mr. Terry. Mr. Lafayette?
I have a report.
Thank you, BZA?
We did have a meeting this past, on the 13th. We passed rules and regulations for the vote from BZA, which they've been working on for a while. And we had one thing we had to vote on and it all went well.
Thank you. We had our planning and zoning meeting on April 20th, like Mr. Terry said. And this was our continuation of the work session from the March 9th meeting. And we did take a, a strong look at different neighborhoods and looked at ways that they would, at the, at the residential subdivision regulation. So what we kind of landed on was a tiered, like 8,000 square foot minimum for lot size of a single-family residential. And double, I can't remember the exact terms, but we, I will put that record in.
Did you guys go with like a higher base and then incentives to make them smaller? Or did you start with a lower base and have incentives to have they get bigger?
We kind of had the higher base, but yet like there's some different things that we're still kind of working on. Like how do you provide more amenities in the code? Like connectivity was one of the things that we wanted to make sure that it was spelled out for the neighborhood. Ms. Brohl said that yes, it is in the code, but we need to address some of those. Like maybe have a different supplemental paper that would go with, or pamphlet that would go with the code. So it's not written in the code, but if you want to insert in housing criteria, we can put it in that. That would be more readily updated versus.
Yeah, it's probably, it's probably not a fair question without Ms. Brohl or Ms. Lupton here. But we should, like, I would assume that the work session will literally just be that. And we would vote on it subsequently at the following meetings. So I'm guessing that gives Ms. Brohl adequate time to like write something up and provide it to us. So we have, you know, information gathering on the Wednesday and then votes on the subsequent actual meetings, so.
Yeah, the draft that we received, because they had made, from the previous meeting, they had made some changes. And as far as the density and, or I shouldn't say density, but the square footage, minimum square footage and lots. They were basically allowing for, and what they built in is basically sort of conservation principle. So if you had a 50%, and this was just a proposal, again, none of this is set, so at this point, but. There's a 50%, if you had 50% kind of conservation area, meaning undisturbed, not like you level it and then plant some trees. Meaning that you don't touch it and you leave a conservation, then you can get a 50% reduction in the density. So you get 4,000 square foot lots or whatever. And again, it was just a proposal at that point and I think the discussion then kind of went to, well, do we, you know. If you do that, and I, I kind of brought it up, it's one of the things of like, you do it either or. You don't, maybe don't want to pigeonhole yourself into either eight foot square foot, 8,000 square feet or 4,000 square feet. And maybe consider something in between. And I think there's still some discussion on, you know, like density credits. You know, if there are particular, particular areas of merits of, you know, connectivity things or silo homes and different variety of product.
So, so for clarification, they didn't, planning and zoning didn't actually pass a recommendation?
No.
No, not yet.
Not yet. And do they plan on passing a recommendation or have they not decided if there's going to have it sent to council like without a recommendation? Have they thought through that part yet?
Well, this is one of the things that kind of came up because I had a question and I couldn't remember to be honest. And if I should have been forward and I to even have got to, how this originated? Because under our planning code, the way that zoning code amendments can come through is either through a recommendation on the planning and zoning commission or council can initiate it on its own. And I seem to recall, because we created a work group to do this, that it was council initiated this. So a recommendation would not procedurally be required from planning and zoning. Now, that doesn't mean that you guys can't take, consider, take account, but it wouldn't be the standard procedure where it becomes relevant when it comes to voting.
That's exactly what I'm thinking of, yeah. So because it's an ordinance change, right? I see it as something that the council should be voting on it through some majority vote as opposed to like a super majority that goes through with the recommendations. It's originated from us. So however we get to that point, I think that's how it should come to us where we're voting on it as a majority, not as a super majority.
Right, we'll have to get, I'll have to go back, but I'm almost 100% that council is the one that initiated this process in zoning rewrite. And that's why we ended up creating a work group to do the zoning rewrite. And again, there's no problem with planning and zoning looking at it and kind of assisting, but it didn't originate with them. Therefore, under the zoning code, it would not require like a two-thirds, super majority of council to approve or modify. I should say not approve, but to modify or.
It's not a recommendation of planning, so not, it's not an official recommendation.
Since it's an ordinance anyways, even if that did happen, we could just literally consider it again as an ordinance. We knew any ordinance change right after, do a super majority. That's why I'm saying it'd be easier to come clean to us, yeah, so, all right.
But, but planning and zoning was like, we, they put a lot of work into making it. They, they want to kind of hope that the recommendation.
We're certainly, we're certainly going to take the recommendation in high regard. I'm just trying to get it cleaned to us so that it doesn't, we don't get in a legal loophole situation where we have to like go back and forth on it, that's all.
And it was a council goal, so it was supposed to happen, yes, in 2020, but.
So, you know, already you kind of delegated it to planning and zoning to look at and to the study group.
Yes.
I forgot what the official term.
But we looked at a very, a variety of houses, like in all the different neighborhoods to see like where lot sizes fell. Like Copperfield was in that 9,000 square foot. My neighborhood ranged anywhere from like 11 to 8. And Darby Fields is even like a 13,000 square foot lot to a 6,000. So we did come up with like the side yard having like minimum eight feet to maximum 18, I believe. Where they could, you know, if one side was closer, they just had to have 18 total on that. So I, we will, I'll, I'll work with Ms. Brohl to have the recommendations sent on to council.
Mr. Udaley, how do you feel about all this discussion? I know you have some concerns about lot sizes and setbacks and.
Yeah, when I see it on paper and I, as the mayor said, she can remember exactly. It's, although what you just said, 18, is better than what we're seeing in the last couple subdivisions we've had. And I think the fire department would like that, at least at that point.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll have some good discussion on Wednesday, let's just put it that way.
Parks and Recreation Committee, Mr. Reed.
Parks and Rec, nothing's happened, well, nothing's happened with the committee. Lots of things happen in Parks and Rec every day. I'd like to point out for anybody, I don't know how you could not be familiar with this document, but if you happen to be not familiar, this is the Plain City Past Tiny Park events schedule. It's available as a link on the website and it lists the calendar for, for the year through December as, as it's known to be. Right now, just pointing out a few near-term things that you might want to be aware of. April 30th, we have a community yard sale, I suppose, I, I think that's probably still on.
Yes.
And that's April 30th, which is coming up in a few days. So that's something to be aware of for sure. And the next stop really doesn't happen until the big stuff is May 28th, the pool opens. That's always a big deal. And everything seems to be getting shipshape in the pool with some repainting going on and some other things. So that looks like a go. And then the next day, May 29th, is the kickoff for Music in the Park with the Bluegrass and Barbecue, which has the, every time you've held it, it's a very well-attended event. I think it's the word barbecue, not the word bluegrass, or maybe put them together and it just, people cannot resist.
It would be the.
And as far as the Music in the Park event, it's, I, I'd never seen people in line at the vendors before, but at Bluegrass and Barbecue, we have the barbecue truck there. They sold out of stuff and there was a line, pretty consistent line of 12 to 20 people in line just to get served at that event. So it's, it's not the largest event in Plain City, but it's a pretty well-attended one. So, and we'll try to keep you updated on, on important stuff at the park as we go forward. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Personnel and finance, KI.
We meet here tomorrow evening at 6:30.
Tomorrow, Wednesday?
I have the 26th.
Okay.
So it's Tuesday.
Okay.
Is it Tuesday or is it Wednesday? Because the, the website says Wednesday.
I have 26th.
And I had seen what you saw.
Did we move it to a Tuesday?
It'd have to be Tuesday because the work session is Wednesday.
No, it's before, or the, or a week from.
So maybe we need to get that clarified for certain, because I saw the same thing you saw in writing that was going to be Tuesday. And I actually put that in my calendar. And then I looked at the website, now it's Wednesday.
I think we went back and forth on Tuesdays or Wednesdays. Were you at the last meeting, Mayor?
Yes, I believe so. I think we went down the 27th, Tuesday, Thursday, the 27th.
Okay, well, we'll go with the, I mean, I have my meeting thing here and I wrote in 4/26, Tuesday at 6:30.
So we, you want to, you can change it, I mean, as long as all the people know, you have the 26th.
Well, I think we better get clarification after the meeting for Mr. Brammer, to be sure.
And Ms. Giomo, and Ms. Pomano.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I apologize for that, that's my notes.
No. We can send an update out of, like if it is a different, on the clarification so everybody knows.
Yeah, okay, thank you, Ms.
You, thank you. Fire Board?
Nothing to report this week.
Design Review Board?
We have no applications for this month, therefore we are not meeting.
Marketing Communication?
I believe May 3rd, we have our first kickoff meeting and there's, we'll have more information after that meeting. And then I also had an opportunity to attend the Union County Chamber of Commerce meeting this past week. And so I have a big report for that, to be honest. When I saw that I had to make a report, my mind was a little bit focused on me.
So this is.
Panicking just a little bit, so.
May 3rd at 6:30 here?
Eee, probably yes.
Okay.
So just to let council know, I appointed Mr. Sence to the Union County Chamber of Commerce Board and Mr. Udaley to the Union County CIC Board. There is a spot that was, that we needed to represent this and so I reached out. And you're on the, Mr. Terry is on the comprehensive plan for Union County.
So we're back with the Union County CIC as well then?
Yes, so again, you're the representative for Madison County.
It's a fun part about being in two counties, so we get to go.
No, we need to, and we need to take advantage of that, a double dip in both sides. There's a lot of the voters.
There's a lot of, there's a lot of history behind a lot of that, so. I'll, I'll sit down with you sometime.
Oh, no, I gotta talk to you there, they gave you a little.
Thank you for that update. And then Administrator Search Committee, we are down for a talk to candidates and we have one interview on May 11th at 5:00 PM. The other one with our candidate coming in from Wisconsin, wanted to give a couple items that were approached to me on, this would be this candidate's second time coming to Plain City for an interview. And if we want, we have the option of Zoom or we had the option, or, there's a couple of different ways you can look at it. Would people be amenable to helping to provide like a transportation cost, like mileage or something along those lines? Or helping to pay like, or hotel room overnight to break up the nine-hour drive?
I think a, in person is probably beneficial. So I think maybe we say we'll pay for the hotel, seems reasonable to me, it's a couple hundred bucks. I don't know if we want to set a dollar limit or if we just want to say hotel mileage. I'm really, I'm open, I think, I think we're trying to pick the city manager, right? So this is a big decision.
Right, and how much, and how much money have we already spent?
Yeah, so like if they, if like, if he wants to, if he or she wants to do mileage and like a hotel, like with a limit of like, I don't know, 500.
My guess is probably cheaper for the airfare, it's 58 cents a mile.
Yeah.
Or, I mean, I mean, there's, it's up to you if you, like Mr. Rocker said, it is, we are spending a lot.
It's kind of, it's, I would say, because we can't really give the administrator this, obviously as the candidate, I'm okay with you like authorizing like some sort of setup where you as the, how about you just talk to the consultant and however they want to handle it. I mean, up to like a thousand bucks.
I would rather give like, that's a high amount, I think, too, I don't know.
In situations where I was asked to travel to interview for a job, I would always expect to be reimbursed for the cost of the trip. So I think that's, would be the good approach to do is just tell them we were reimbursed the cost of the trip for, for airline ticket, hotel and meals.
Well, lodging, lodging and transportation is, I think, sufficient.
Yeah.
That's fine.
Anyone have any problem with providing them?
No problem.
No problem.
I'd like to have them in person, if I can.
So then the second part of that question was like, would you be open to a weekend interview? But if we were paying for this portion, I would, I know our weekend.
The problem is the weekends have probably already filled up. I would prefer to keep it on 16th if possible.
Okay.
Anyone?
I, I agree. Weekends are pretty full. I mean, there's like a Mother's Day in there and then.
So, so what would happen then about, I mean, I'm open to all of the possible hours of 24 and seven days a week, but. So, so would we try to do this then in the evening hours?
What about the evening?
Well, I would say, let's, let's do it this way. We're scheduled for 6:30 on Monday evening on the 16th. If the individual cannot attend in person on the day, we are happy to do it by Zoom. If they are able to attend in person, we will pay for lodging and transportation.
Yeah, I think the most convenient time to do it would probably be your Friday evening, since he wouldn't be, he wouldn't miss the day of work.
Right, Fridays are not going to be good.
Because the next day would be Saturday, I'm just saying. I mean, it's not a personal preference, obviously, for council members, but.
We're, we're in Wisconsin.
Chrome and weather?
How close is that to Madison?
I have no idea.
Because round trip, round trip Madison would be about $600 using a 58 cent mile.
They're both looking for.
So.
And it's our finest driver, okay.
Delta 772 out of Milwaukee.
I'm here with the flight, I think that's the flight. Okay.
Put it on my Delta 772.
What do you think, Mayor?
I, I think that would be amiable.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, man.
That's right.
Sorry, sorry, sorry. Give him a mic, should we have him like that?
So, Tom, good?
I don't know what we're talking about.
There you go.
Back out.
You'll be, you could write the council on that.
It's a lot of allowance money.
You're sometimes not alone in that.
Okay, I will report that back to our consultant and, and we will just plan for 6:30.
Are we doing 6:30 on the 11th as well?
Is it 6:30 on the 11th?
Or is it 6?
It's 5 o'clock on the 11th.
5 o'clock on the 11th.
6:30 on the.
6:30 on the 16th.
You got something in there?
Yes.
And, and how will that work? Mr. Solicitor will start a meeting, call an executive session, go interview and come out? Is that how that'll work? Mr. Solicitor?
I'm sorry.
So how will that work? Will we call a meeting, go into executive session?
Yes.
And then come back out?
Yep.
Right, so we'll have to do that in.
Yeah.
Okay. Moving out of reports into old business, second reading ordinance 8-222, ordinance to approve current replacement pages to the Plain City classified ordinance declaring emergency.
So what happened?
We're going to have to declare emergency because it's the second reading.
Yeah, I don't think we need that.
Well, you're 30 days tail.
Oh, 30 days, okay.
The emergency's just going to grow to 30 days tail.
Okay.
So what happened to this? Well, I answered.
It's every year, whenever, so every year, once a year, typically it's once a year, Walter Drane tracks all of the Ohio Revised Code changes by the General Assembly. And to the extent that it impacts our code and to the extent that we have to comply with state code in certain areas, there's a whole section on gaming where they made significant changes, laws, that we have to make our code consistent with theirs. So they basically insert those changes there in their package, there were highlighted sections, I've already gone back and back checked against all of them.
We did the same thing last year.
Yeah, we do it every year.
So, so they do, they do editing?
Yes.
Okay, cool.
Yeah, they do the editing. I just go through and verify that those code sections that we have match up with the Ohio Revised Code.
Did we do a first reading of this one?
Yes.
Yes.
When, when do we do the first reading?
Yes, let's.
Yes, less.
On the eleventh.
The eleventh, oh, this month.
Yeah, and Ms. Lupton's.
I must have been sleeping, so, sorry, yeah, okay, thank you.
Motion to approve ordinance zero eight twenty-two declaring an emergency.
Second.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Should we have a.
Yes.
Sir, decent.
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
The Rucker?
Yes.
Mr. Sens?
Yes.
Moving into new business, first reading resolution.
Madam Mayor, before we do this, I just want to get a comment in here because I have a question. I wrote down three things that are problematical as far as this resolution is concerned.
The motion that we just passed?
Uh, just wait a minute.
The motion that we just passed?
Yep, no, not this, not that, this one, before we read this resolution. It occurs to me that this, all of the stuff on the list in the letter have to do with administrator duties and responsibilities. And I'm not sure we want to preempt his ability to, to, to weigh in on this. Let's just put it as lightly as I can, that he would, he may not like this company, or want to do business with this company. He might want to do business with this company, we don't know.
Who is he?
He might want to go.
Who is he?
He or she, the new administrator we're about to select. Because these all are things that he would have to work with. These are all things he would have to work with when he comes on board, if we go ahead and pass this contract. Okay, so I just wanted council to think about that. And, you know, if you have an opinion about that, if you want to reserve this decision for the new administrator, if you just want to go and, and set it up for him in advance, then, you know, that's the other option. I will vote against it, not only for that reason, but because some other reasons I have questions about in the ordinance, so.
That's the same thing that they did a couple years ago.
Yeah, we worked with these, we worked with these people over multiple times and we've always gotten great service from them, so.
We're on their hands.
Yeah, we're not going anywhere.
So I will move on with the first reading resolution ten dash twenty-two. A resolution authorizing and driving the village administrator to enter into an agreement with Rocknell Financial Consulting for consulting services. And there are no discussion items, there are emotions.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Hit their gavel.
There you go.
Smack the gavel one more time. Say, "Meeting adjourned."
You don't even know.
There you go.
Reminder that high schools got doing their Shrek performance this week, Thursday, Friday, Saturday and Sunday.